Call the meeting order, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Susan Wong.
Just barely.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, motion passes. Next is the consent agenda, any questions?
And we have to approve the consent agenda.
The move in second here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, motion passes. Is there anybody here that would like to speak with anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, special reports and presentations, Mr. Harris, come up.
So we have a proclamation for you, after a couple attempts. States whereas January twenty twenty-two, Coach Kit Harris was selected as the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one NFHS National Girls Wrestling Coach of the Year. Whereas in recognition of Coach Harris as a leader and role model to the youth of our community, now therefore I Casey Seminole, Mayor of the City of Baldwin City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March first, twenty twenty-two to be twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one National Girls Wrestling Coach of the Year, Kit Harris, recognition. So thank you for everything.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach.
Next item is old business, library ordinance, this will be the first reading for that. Senior packet that it was amended. The proposed ordinance is a repeal and replace of the current charter ordinance to allow for the library to levy up to five mils per state law, five point two mils per year for five years. So incremental to help us budget. And I know the library is here to present, so I'll offer it for you guys.
My name is Gerard Aronovich with the Baldwin City Library Board. With me is Chelsea Paxton, our treasurer and, sorry, Wendy Potiver, our director. And we have Cynthia Beal here from the Friends. I wanted to, on behalf of the board, thank you all for working with us so closely on this proposal. And thank you, Mayor. The board is in complete support of the intent to install the five mil levy cap for the library with the intention of not exceeding point two mils every year for the next five years. And our plans with the extra funding is to put that towards employee wages and benefits so that we can close the gaps with our competing libraries. Operational enhancements include extending our hours and possibly adding a assistant director position. And then lastly, we want to work on some building needs, which includes replacing some board flooring and working on our technology, especially our wireless access and network upgrades for the community. And we look forward to working with the city finance committee and their annual budget and planning process because a stronger library means a stronger Baldwin City. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard. Council discussion on this, so this is a charter ordinance, we have to have two readings. And it is a super majority vote from there. Once it's passed, we have to publish it in a sixty day hearing timeframe, correctly? Did I miss anything on there?
Yeah, I think that's the right, that's where it's done, so this is just first reading of it.
Was there any council discussion, I know we've talked about this quite a bit.
I'm glad to see it get going because I am pro library. I don't think everybody else is.
Yeah, I think everybody here is pro library for sure. Definitely a valuable asset to Baldwin. I am curious though, how this is going to translate to the average citizen as far as dollars.
Well, it's essentially approximately eight thousand dollars per year on it. My hope would be through the budget cycle and all indications this year point to an assessed valuation increase in double digit range. I know Johnson County put out an article yesterday that they're anticipating the percent assessed valuation range. So my hope, once we get that in June, we won't know till June, is that we'd be able to reduce ours by deployment to try to keep.
Okay.
That would be
Yeah.
my ultimate goal. And as long as we continue to see the assessed valuation increases that we have, I don't foresee that being an issue at all.
This takes place over a five year period. Is there any, was there any discussion of what happens beyond that five years?
Well, that's state law, state law is five mils.
It takes them. But it still falls back on the council here, right?
Well, the library is maxed out at five mils per state law.
Okay, so the state law would have to change the mil levy order for that to take place. And that would be out of our hands or out of the
Yeah.
U.S.'s hands because I won't be here.
That'd be out of the city's hands at that, at that point, to be able to, state to increase that, okay.
Sure, sure, we'll take that into consideration.
I'm glad something's finally going forward. It's been a long time coming and I think the library needs as much as they can with all of the different programs and things that they're doing for the community.
If there's no other discussion, we'll move on to the next agenda.
We don't motion.
No.
Just a reading, just a reading.
Okay, next item is the street plan discussion. We, we kind of said at the last meeting, we continue to put this on the agenda. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We continue to put this on the agenda each meeting so we can discuss on how to move forward with the street plan and what we wanted to do, so it's kind of, what's on here?
Yeah. I think last time they were talking about redoing the brick streets before we could do the sixth and high thing, so as far as the latest information I have is that do the brick streets, especially like Ninth Street, since it's so bad, but even the downtown. If they redo the, the street in asphalt, it's about two hundred thousand a block. And if it's concrete, it's about two hundred fifty thousand. And if they rehab the brick, it's four hundred thousand per block. So.
How often do you have to rehab the streets for all three scenarios? You mean re-overlay?
Mm-hmm. I think Rob, every ten years?
For all three scenarios? For asphalt, concrete, and brick?
I thought the brick was a hundred years. The brick's not a hundred years?
I think Rob was
Is that what it is, Rob, a hundred years?
I think Rob was referring to asphalt overlay.
I don't know what you're going to.
If we could, if we could get a new asphalt street and start it in our chip seal program, and we could get it sealed after three or four years, it'd extend the life of it. You know, and, and just leave it alone, probably you'd start seeing somewhere in about ten years, twelve, fifteen maybe. Same with concrete, you know, it's, one was, I was trying to think the other day, that, that stretch of Eighth Street between the highway and, and the power building when it was put in is in the probably early nineties. And so it's been down thirty years and you know it's getting to the point where it's starting to need something, done with it, so. You know, brick by far and away is going to be your, your longest lifespan longevity. Those brick have been in there for a hundred years.
Right.
Brick, I've said that the bricks aren't failing, it's the base that's failing.
Right.
Other than the fact that the bricks are, are, are starting to work, just because of the, yeah, they're curving. And you can see that if you look at them real close, especially in the intersections where people are willing to stop.
Right.
Pushing on.
Maybe the idea is a good way to stop sites. What is it, Eighth Street and Ninth Street done at the same time?
As far as the bricks.
Asphalted.
I don't think Ninth asphalted it.
No.
There is a street down there somewhere, it's asphalt, and it comes in and turns into bricks. There's the block east and west.
I guess, I guess Ninth Street is.
Maybe up the Baker.
Chapel.
Chapel maybe, yeah.
Chapel, first couple of blocks is.
Done at the same time?
No, that was, that was done prior to. That's, that's been that way since I've been here. And I, I, I worked on the concrete section of Eighth Street.
That street's in pretty good shape, that asphalt's in pretty good shape.
It doesn't see the same amount of traffic that a lot of the other streets do, a lot of people avoid Ninth Street.
Yeah. Especially if you have a cup of coffee.
It's not a cheap.
Don't get coffee from McDonald's and drive down that street, I guarantee.
Those numbers that, that, that's kind of snisq you quoted, those are a couple of years old, and that was not for a street as wide as High Street.
Right.
High Street's forty-five, fifty feet in thought's wide. And so of course it's just, that's a, that's a standard street about like Ninth Street or Eighth Street and High Street are extra wide, so would add to the cost per block.
I feel that our primary goal should be to concentrate on downtown. I'm very pro brick streets, I don't want to lose any of that history at all. That's, that's where I stay on brick streets.
What are you talking about downtown? What, what do you call downtown?
High Street, Eighth Street.
High Street and what?
Eighth Street. There's two primaries.
And you're starting on each side, at what point? Where you start downtown at on, on High Street?
I'd probably say
Ninth?
I mean, oh, east-west, yeah, probably Ninth.
And you're taking it to where, Sixth Street?
No, I'd take it all the way to where the bricks go now. I consider that all downtown.
How much of that downtown that you're talking about in that section needs to be replaced? Because I don't know.
All of it has to be replaced underneath.
Well, except that bridge, I mean, where, where we're at on that intersection.
Well, depending on what we do with that intersection. What we decide on.
I'll speak for myself, I'll say retain as much of the brick streets as you possibly can, that's reasonable. And then, and it's determined what reasonable is, and, and kind of figuring out what your plan is from there. I don't know if calling out specific intersections and blocks is the way to start or not. I think you kind of need to make a budget for how much you want to spend on brick streets, and then go and say, this fits, this fits, this fits.
Personally, I think, I think, personally I think that it goes beyond that a little bit, in that when we get, talk about Ninth Street and specifically Fifty-sixth to High Street, you have to start having neighborhood conversation because there are other financing mechanisms if the neighborhood
Sure.
so chooses to use that.
I agree with that approach.
And there's, and there's the, the funding opportunities through the state and all that as well, through KDOT. And we don't, we have unanswered questions there too, so. There's a lot of unknowns.
How do you go about, how do you go about doing this, this polling of the neighborhood that you're talking about, how, how you going to handle that?
Well, probably very similar to how we did the sidewalks and stuff.
I'm not here for that, I don't know how you did it.
Neighborhood meetings, send letters to the neighbors, invite them to their meeting, discuss with them what we're talking about doing, what our options are, what the financing options could be, what that means to their property taxes on you, because that's what I'm talking about, the special district, special tacting district to help pay for the financing of it. But I, I think that if we don't explain all the options to them, I've talked to people that live on those streets and that is probably the number one thing that they love about the street they live on is the brick. Just because it adds to the character of the house.
Well, I'm a little, I'm a little different than, than what he's come up with. Then through his asphalt already on Ninth Street, and it comes down to quite a distance off of Fifty-sixth Highway, I would just assume see that go ahead and be asphalt drawn out because you've only got, what, three blocks there and two blocks there that would be brick? That anybody might want to change?
On Ninth?
On Ninth?
The brick starts right in front of Irwin Hall on Chapel, and then heading south goes all the way to High.
The asphalt does.
No, the brick, there's only two blocks of asphalt there. C, D, E, F, G, H, that's six blocks of brick that's existing now.
I just come up that street checking that, and I swore that it come up
North of High Street?
Went south off of Fifty-sixth on Ninth Street. And it was only like two or three, two, two blocks or three blocks to get me downtown. Well, I came back out on High Street or Eighth Street. Now maybe I'm, I'm old and I understand I've had a stroke, but sometimes I still come in my head.
Well, a week, a week and a half ago, I about crashed my car in front of Luke Taylor's place on Ninth and Ames, and I could tell you, that's exactly where it goes.
You live on Ninth Street?
Eight, ten.
You live on Tenth Street?
Yeah. That's all, none of that brick.
I would just assume, assume C-Sixth Street down here, like we talked about at the last council meeting, be asphalt, or not asphalt, but be cement for that, that area of that intersection. And be asphalt all over to where connects the asphalt coming in from the east. And you know, and of course he's going the other way, so I don't know if we have a conflict we can't get around.
I don't know that anybody should be, I don't know that anybody should be trenched in on what it should be right now, I think.
I know, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
You know, I agree with that, and all we're doing is throwing out pots at the moment.
Right.
Which could be changed in, in ten minutes from now.
Right.
And as far as what goes north on Eighth Street, if they, if we could have kept that brick all the way to Fifty-sixth Highway, that would have been fine with me, but since it's not, it's got asphalt down before you say Chapel.
Dearborn, on Ames.
Dearborn, down in Dearborn? You know, that's, that's too bad, but if it was brick from Dearborn on, on through downtown, maybe one block south of the bank or the next intersection pass, I could, I could go with that. And I know it's not going to be cheap. But that would be the one street, that would be the one street that I would root for for sure, to maintain as brick. And I suppose when you get through the polling in neighborhoods and stuff, if the people will come forward and tell us what they really feel, and I hope it doesn't cause a conflict between this neighborhood here and the neighborhood across the street.
Well, it's a matter too, what, what you're funding fully out of pocket and, and what, you have to come up with matching money for KDOT. You know, so, I mean, we don't know that yet.
And I think when you get into a situation like we're talking about, discussing it with people in the neighborhood, I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't have something to do with the age and the gender of the people that you talk to. Because the older people
For brick streets?
Huh?
For brick streets?
Yeah, the older people may be for the brick streets, and the younger people may not, or vice versa, it may be the opposite. But I think it's going to have something to do with, with age.
Well, they get their say either way.
And I've talked to some older people that's been here most of their lives, and they're, they say, get rid of them. They use a little different term than that, I was nice about it because I didn't want to embarrass Suzie.
He must not know me very well, Jerry.
Yeah, I mean, I think all that, all that's on the table as far as, you know, you know, like Corey's at the funding thing, I think we, we probably need to start working on this center then later, because there is a lot of funding coming out for infrastructure projects and potentially more infrastructure road stuff. Where, where we could potentially get some eighty, twenty matching grants like we did.
We don't want, we don't want to forget that we have a person amongst us who has more experience with this stuff than any one of us here. And that's him, and I'd like to hear his opinion.
Called out.
Well, actually, Rob has a lot of experience too.
I didn't forget him.
Yeah, I know, yeah, so which, well, never, yeah, you have, you have to identify what, what areas we're going to keep, and that's going to be crucial. We have cost estimates for what it'll cost you, brick street, asphalt, concrete, whatever. So the first thing to do is identify the areas we're going to save. And then we're going to have to fund it, where I talked about perhaps KDOT funding that can work with some of your downtown streets, the rest of them, probably not. So it's going to take some kind of funding, the most logical way to do that is through a sales tax. And so that has to go to a vote, and so, you know, we're going to have to put out there for the public to vote out whether, so then you're going to know, I mean, we can all do a survey and say, do you want brick streets or not, do you want it this? But if they don't vote for it, they don't vote for the funding, they're telling you they don't really want it. So that, that's, that's, that's the sign that you're going to know that people really want to keep the brick streets. Because you have to pay for it some way, somehow. And really, voting down it through, through the sales tax, I think is the most logical way to do it. Probably don't want to do it through property tax. But I think either a quarter cent, half cent, whatever that number's going to be, or a sales tax would be the most logical way to do that. Honestly, the sooner you do that, the better. It takes a long time, you know, to put that on the ballot and explain it to people, and you need to start the building of the funding source to match grants, or do whatever you're going to be doing forward. But we need to have a plan, and I think that's why it's on the agenda tonight, is to keep talking about what is the area we're trying to preserve? Is it all of downtown, is it all of thirty blocks I believe we have in the city? We know what that number will be, it's four hundred thousand dollars minimum per block.
That's delay break.
Delay the brick, if you're looking at
And two hundred thousand, you say two hundred thousand per asphalt?
Yeah, so yeah, your brick street is going to be double what it's going to cost for any other surface. Because you're, 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 you're doing the street twice, which is doing it. But Corey's point, it will last twice as long. And it's like Rob said, the bricks are not the problem. They've been there a hundred years.
It's the under, it's the under.
It's the underground that part, but, but yeah, and he did point out something before, he goes, some of the bricks because they're warping because of the traffic over them. And that's the other part, we're going to have to establish a truck route, because once we put those bricks in, you don't want heavy trucks on them, they were not ever made for that. So that all has to come together, and I think that's a discussion we need to continue to have. I don't know if we want to do it here, break it down into a street committee that just handles this and carries this all forward, I don't know. I don't know which committee or committees or
I'm not too sure we got the motor on the airplane yet.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we have a, yeah, I don't think we have a consensus on exactly what are we trying to do? Is it, is it just the downtown, or is it all the streets? I think you need to answer that question first.
Thank you.
Okay.
You got anything you want to put into it?
Well, we're not just talking about, let's just take Ninth Street for example, we're not just talking about streets, we're talking about curb gutter, storm sewer, it all needs to be replaced. I mean, anybody that's driven it knows that it's all in bad shape, there's, there's no saving any of it. I mean, we patch it if we have to, but just, just to get you by. Personally, I've, I've laid a lot of bricks and they are, they are a huge pain. I mean, they are, you have to do it twice, you have a concrete base and sand, you make them great, you lay in bricks, it's a lost art. You know, I've got three guys that can do it, we're all way past fifty. Ninth Street, in my opinion, I, I think Ninth Street should come up, I think Ninth Street should be asphalt. I think it ought to be curb gutter asphalt, I think we ought to do one block, show everybody just how nice it could possibly look, and if we don't do something, we're just going to keep kicking the can down the road.
We're not going to have to kick it down the road.
Let's do a block, let's do a block and see if we like it or not, you know, and then but I, I think it's, I think it's a lot of discussion, I think it's, I think it's not something that we can come to a, a decision quickly on it, but I do think we need to keep talking about it, and we need to keep moving forward. And we've been talking about this for, for thirty years. I know.
Thank you, appreciate it, and thank you for your here.
Well, just going to wrap it up when I'm, while I always warn people about it, this, either way we go, as if, if you're out there talking, people are going to find out, there's two kinds of people in this world, people love the brick streets, people hate it. So no matter which way you go, you're going to get one of those reactions there from people. There's, there's not going to be a solution we come up with, everybody's going to be saying, great, go with that. Brick streets have an emotional impact the other streets do not have. And it's just because of the history and whatever they have with them, so we're not, we're not going to reach a point where everybody's going to be happy with whatever decision comes out. Somebody's going to be way on one side, way on the other, there's not any middle ground out there. It's a strange thing for us to deal with, but that's what it is.
The one thing that interests me that, that comes to my mind about what you're speaking about is the fact that in your block, your neighbors and the neighbors across the street want brick, but in the next block, they want asphalt.
How do you solve that problem?
Huh?
How do you solve, how do you make that decision?
That's exactly where I'm at, when we start talking about, well, we'll do this section, let that section go. How do you make the decision on which one? How do you make the decision on which ones you want or do you want and she doesn't?
Right. That's, that's going to be a hard decision. So it's not just the council sitting here talking. It's, it's going to be the individual property owners who are living on the street.
That's, that's where the ballot is going to have to come in.
Exactly. So you're going to know if you put that out for a vote, how, how deeply are people really invested in that, in that street? And where, I, I think you'll find out a lot of people are, but there are a lot of people who are not too, so. But that's the, that's the quickest, the best way to find out. Because we can talk and do surveys and do all, you know, that's all theoretical and that's fine. That's good information. But when it comes time to put it out for a vote, you'll find out how popular that is.
I, uh, I think we've gathered a lot of information there, Casey, in a hurry, with a lot of different ideas that each one of us could throw around. Now we have to make a decision. This is what we're going to do. And we can't do that tonight.
No, wasn't intended to be that.
We might not be able to do that any year.
Might not be able to. We will just keep it on the agenda and continue to discuss it.
But thanks for bringing it up.
Yep.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it, Rob.
Sure.
All right, next, new business liquor ordinance. So we brought this forward. State law changed to allow liquor sales at ten, Memorial on Sundays. And Glenn in Dakota can kind of fill you in if it goes past that.
You want to go to the other?
Sure. The story of it is the, the amendment, ordinance amendment that would allow currently sales are noon to eight. This amendment would allow sales starting at ten AM, same close time at eight PM. Keeps the same holidays in place that are in place now. Uh, no sales on Easter, Memorial Labor, and I believe Fourth of July. So that tracks with state law. The only change that you expand the hours from ten to eight opposed to noon to eight. Um, so it's a very small change in the ordinance, uh, language. It's literally ten instead of noon now. So that's the only difference between two ordinances. Doesn't affect any other of the hours of operations and it only affects, affects all alcohol sales. So it's not malt and beer, but for liquor stores and or, um, you know, it's like, so it's not off sale, they would be allowed to sell from starting at ten AM opposed to at noon. So that's, that's a short of it.
Discussion?
I think we're one of the last towns to have a noon Sunday start. It's pretty archaic.
Yeah.
If anybody has their arguments against it, I'm, will hear.
What did you say?
Reason why we wouldn't say. I'm saying that, that the noon start for liquor sales on Sundays is one of the last towns I know does that. I think it's pretty outdated. And I'm saying that, that I have no reason to object to a change to it unless somebody else does.
So you still want to start it on at noon?
No.
You want to start at ten o'clock? Okay, I don't.
Why?
Because Sunday was set forth in the good book to be used for religious purposes. And if you're going to go out and spend ten dollars or twenty-five dollars for a bottle of whiskey, I would just as soon see those people spend that money in the church or give the people who want the opportunity to go to church to go to church and put money in the plate.
I don't know that. Buying it at ten is supposed to be.
I have no problem with anybody drinking at all. It's just that I have a deal because that's, I, I have more, I have, have more belief in, in Sunday than I do in the bottle of Old Crow.
Old Crow?
Old Charter, whatever you want, Crown Royal.
Old something.
I drink it all.
Well, I'm, we're going to disagree on that, but that's perfectly reasonable position to have.
It's not, it's not a point of argument. It's my feelings and your feelings.
I'm not arguing.
And, well, I know we're not, we're not. But I, you know, I'm, I'm not for it, but it's going to go along with whatever the rest of you.
This just affects the liquor stores or grocery stores or whatever?
I think anybody who sells alcohol.
Like the bars can be open at ten too?
Yeah.
I believe so.
That's correct. And, um, so anyone with the liquor license that you cover by it, uh, doesn't mean that they have to be or have to sell it. They usually are, if you don't want to open your liquor store until noon because you aren't going to, and women will be trapped with that or don't want to be open before noon because of personal beliefs, you can still do that. But you'd be allowed to if you want to expand your hours.
I've worked in the bar industry in Bolton City for fifteen years and I can tell you, I've worked a lot of Sundays. And, um, I know Chiefs game starting at noon is a, is a real pain point for people who want to come and enjoy the game. Fifteen minutes before kickoff, instead of having to show up in the door and lock's right at noon, it's about to happen.
That, that was my first thought.
That's, it's just, I mean, it's, you know.
It allows a little window of time before the game starts.
Whenever it comes to alcohol, your, your values are always, well, it's, it's booze. Do we really need it? You know, and then you're measuring your, weighing your values and stuff like that. But from, from somebody who's still currently in the service industry, who's been in the service industry, um, I know that that's always sort of, you're like, well, if we started noon, what the heck's, what's wrong with an hour or two early? And that's kind of where it was been.
But you have six days in a week that you can use it that way.
Yeah.
Now, if people want to celebrate or, you know, watch the games or whatever, why don't they buy it on Saturday? I mean, you know, plan ahead.
But I, I mean, why have liquor sales at all? Well, you need, you need to stock up on Mondays. It won't be closed the rest of the week.
But the reality is they could drive seven miles to the east and pick up.
Exactly.
And drive seven miles to the east.
That, that's all that's happening is people are going out of topic at the.
Right. They're still going to get their liquors one way or another.
I, I don't care what happened seven miles over there. I live here.
I get that.
This is my town.
I get that. But if they can just drive seven miles over, are we changing anything by not allowing liquor sales at seven, or at ten o'clock on Sundays?
Well, I, I don't mind the liquor store selling it earlier. But I don't think our bars should be open at ten o'clock on Sunday. I don't think they should be able to stay open until two in the morning either. Just my opinion.
Now, Casey, I'm not being called upon to make a decision for what's going to happen in Edgerton or Gardner or Chicago. If they want to go that far to get liquor on Sunday and get it at ten o'clock in the morning, I don't have a problem with that. But I, I do not feel comfortable because it's on Sunday here. And I think, I think at noon's good enough because that's the way it's been and it's worked.
And that's fair. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with what your thought is on that by any means. I was making just a statement that if they want it and we're trying to deter it, they can get it anyhow.
We know that. That's a given.
Okay.
That's a good point. Sales tax that we're losing. I'd like to vote and make a motion. I move to approve the amendment to the liquor sales ordinance.
Second. Moving to second, really?
No.
Corey?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jerry? I vote aye. Motion passes. Next council committee.
I'm going to do that one.
Budget and finance, Corey.
Well, let's see here. Uh, met on the eighteenth. Um, discussed what we can, discussed change of staff, made the utility vote payment process. Um, our software, up until we upgraded it, um, didn't allow for, um, the, uh, the fee, the credit card fee to be passed on to the, uh, the person running the credit card, the customer. And, uh, this one does now. So the city before had been absorbing forty-seven thousand dollars a year. So, um, now that the stat's been updated, um, or the software's been updated for seven K, it makes it possible going forward. So you still pay with the check, still coming to pay, uh, with the check online even, right? You can pay with a check online.
And transfer.
Oh, yeah.
Once we get it up and running, yes.
Right. So, um, yeah, the only way it affects is if it's just quite a garden. Um, reviewed the five, library of five-year budget plan. Uh, we just went over that. Baker Tilly presented a water and wastewater rate study, um, the reserve fund status and impact. Um, we just, we have a council decision on that, on those rates, with the sewer especially. Um, need to be a part of the twenty twenty-three budget planning process. Rates may need to increase prior to twenty twenty-three fiscal year starting in January. So we have a lot to talk about there. Um, it kind of feels like we just went through the water. But the sewer's been bleeding for quite a while. Um, discussed looking at the budget impact of the additional electricity generation capacity request versus buying paper capacity. Um, this is kind of, just a, just a discussion about going forward. I mean, it's, we're kind of at a crossroads. Do we, do we continue just keeping up with our generations? Our population grows to match that? Um, or, or, you know, do we start looking at how other towns possibly do it? And just, just kind of, now's one of those moments where you revisit that. Um, thought it was worth bringing up and discussing. It's more of a philosophical direction of how you want the city to go. Um, also gathering data, look at the cost of generating all electricity versus buying, uh, full requirement capacity. Was discussed as well. Um, that is all.
To just add on, on the software grid, it ended up netting the city forty thousand dollars savings for just switching that. Our hope and, and our expectation is less people will use credit cards to avoid the extra two point eight seven five, eight five percent fee, uh, which is okay. They still have a free option to still pay online by going on the actual. Community development, Corey?
Oh, me again. Um, we met yesterday. Um, we'd been kind of flirting with a, uh, March fourth and April fifteenth sort of kickoff for the community center fundraising. Um, had a long discussion about it. Had a good long discussion about it. Um, ultimately came to the decision that we, 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 we saw a lot of events happening in the summer that we wanted to capture. And having those early spring events, March fourth and April fifteenth, could possibly maybe lose some steam. And, and by the time those big events come around, we can really kind of get a lot of a heist and contact with people. Um, we didn't want to miss out on that and, and kind of burn everyone out before that. So, uh, we decided to go ahead and eighty-six the March fourth and April fifteenth meetings, um, or fundraising events and, uh, focus on June, July, August, and October. Was there any event in September? Yes, there was. Okay. So, um, yeah.
So what are those events going to be cut off there?
Well, they're still kind of in the works. Um, we, we definitely want to have some kind of a presence at Maple Leaf with all the traffic. Um, and so that was kind of one of the reasons for cutting it short on the front end and extending it to the back end. Um, there is just a lot of events downtown, Lumberyard events, concert events, smoke on the bricks, um, that we would rather play around those.
Right. But I mean, your, your dates that you're working for the fundraising?
Yeah.
What is, what does that involve?
The specific dates for the, well, June eighteenth was the one, the, the next one. Uh, and that was a, that was a concert at Sullivan Square.
Okay.
Um, that was the first one.
I guess you're not having a, a public meeting or anything to talk about fundraising?
Yeah. Yeah. We just wanted to coincide. We just wanted to coincide with, with these. And that way, you know, that way it's not crickets and, you know, people who might really have questions and otherwise wouldn't have been there to ask. And it's, it's right here. So, uh, we're down here anyway.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the more, the more people you can inform and, and get involved, the, the better. And March fourth and April fifteenth kind of started us out like, not that. March fourth, March fourth is the daddy-daughter dance. And so there's going to be like so many people who are like, we're going to be gone for this or say, okay. Good? Uh, no, we meet again on the last Tuesday in March, which is.
Last Tuesday or Monday?
Monday and the twenty-eighth, four o'clock, second floor, Chicago.
Well, it's eight, Susan?
We have not met since our last meeting, so I don't have any updates. Our next meeting is the eighth at four o'clock.
Oh, of course. Two.
Uh, we have not met since the last meeting either. Our next meeting is, uh, March tenth at nine o'clock.
What do you plan on?
Um, Scott and I, uh, met informally just to kind of get a plan, um, to get started on a plan, um, how we want to do that. So we spent a couple hours talking and I think we're, we've got some direction a little bit. So, uh, maybe the next meeting will have a little bit more information.
City administrator, Steph Collins?
No, nothing further for me, no.
Council Collins? Only comment I have is just a reminder of the work session next Tuesday on the whole power generation and substation. Seven o'clock. All right, I want to get a motion adjourned.
I'm not done yet. Yep. Uh, I think in the five of us, when we get really deep into this, into this street thing, I think with the five of us or whoever the five may be at that time, need to take into consideration that we, we are a family and we won't be able to advise people in the neighborhood one way or the other or shouldn't even come too close to mentioning the fact that we may want, if you have to make a vote, as to what to do. So that we can all stay together and, and be fair without, without. I'm not going to go out and tell, tell somebody, I want you to vote this way or that way, or this is what I want in your street or that kind of stuff. But we all need to kind of stay close as a family to do that. I don't have anything else. I'll shut up. But you all, you all understand what I mean.
Right.
I might not have said it right, but you know.
I think you can give the people the information so that they can make a decision.
But no.
But I don't, yeah, I don't think people, we should tell them what to do.
We don't want to encourage it one way or the other.
I understand what you're.
If it goes to sales tax vote, I believe we can legally anyhow.
I don't think city staff can. We can.
Yeah, it's always the officials. You cannot campaign for it. Neither can I. Neither can. You can do exactly that, give information and whatever. But no, you can't campaign one way or the other for, uh, a question of the ballot. You cannot do that.
That's for the sales tax. That's what, that's for a vote.
Right. That's where you're doing a formal vote for.
Now, what I was speaking about was, and I'm going back to the fire building, was leading up to the vote. So getting information out there.
Correct.
Now, that, that was where city staff couldn't really have as much involvement, but council members could.
Well, yeah, you could. But, you know, if we had put that to a, a sales tax vote or something, again, the same.
When the vote happened. Yeah.
Yeah. And then again, came right before the other.
Right. But you got to get the information out there before the.
Right. That's, that's all we're doing at that point.
Right.
Uh, I took notice of, of, of some of the trucks today and how clean the guys have got their trucks. They really look nice. I think that, uh, presents a lot to the people in the city that the equipment's being taken care of. And I appreciate that. I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second. Moving to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye.